Good evening and welcome to our city council's study session of April 24th, 2023. Glad to see some folks in the audience. We are always so blessed and grateful to honor people who are doing great things in our city. That's what our proclamations and many of you are here for. So with that, Clerk, please take the role.
Mayor Hartke.
Present.
Vice Mayor Orlando.
Here.
Councilmember Encinas.
Here.
Councilmember Ellis.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Present.
Councilmember Poston.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good. And as by his, Councilmember Orlando is participating on WebEx and so we will be working out of here. Angel, please. Angel Encinas, Councilmember, please join me up front. All right. First, we have, we have, we don't have any staff recognitions today. Is my understanding these are all connected with our proclamations? Is that correct, City Manager?
That's correct.
All right. It's kind of rare. Our first proclamation is National Water Safety Month. If Jessica Chamberlain from Aquatics and Carlos Varga from Fire would come on up.
Yeah. Mayor, from here to here. Oh, the entire thing. Okay. Sorry, guys. This is my first time up here. Whereas Chandler recognizes swimming and aquatic-related activities are integral part of communities and provide rewarding experiences that improve the physical, mental, and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas the aquatic centers and programs within the city make Chandler, Arizona, an attractive and desirable place to live, work, play, and visit while contributing to its ongoing quality of life and overall vitality. And whereas the citizens of Chandler understand the essential role that water safety education plays in preventing drownings and recreational water-related injuries. And whereas the aquatic police, the aquatic police and fire departments are partnering their ongoing efforts and commitments to educate the public on water safety issues and initiatives. Whereas the citizens of Chandler understand they must be vigilant and practice water safety rules with families and individuals of all ages, whether owners of private pools, users of public swimming facilities, or visitors of water parks and lakes. And whereas water safety extends beyond pools and large bodies of waters, citizens must also be mindful of household amenities such as toilets, tubs, and large buckets of waters. Now, therefore, Mayor Kevin Hartke of the City of Chandler do hereby proclaim May 23rd as Water Safety Month.
Hello, everyone. So this is a partnership between the city, the Fire Department, Aquatics, and the Police Department. May is National Water Safety Month, and we feel it's really important to teach the lessons of water safety through CPR, swim lessons, whether for children or adults. Our Aquatics Division is, provides 10,000 water swim lessons each year. Never swim alone, protect your animal around the canal, all these different things and our ideas and opportunities to practice water safety. You know, it's starting to heat up. We all enjoy the water, but we have to practice water safety. And so these are the couple of things that you'll see us messaging in the month of May. Thank you. Yes. Thank you. Thank you for the reminder. Yeah. So, May 6th, we're going to be doing a water safety walk. The Fire Department, it's going to be around the area of McClintock and Chandler Boulevard. We're asking for volunteers to come join us as we spread the message of water safety door-to-door. Also, that evening, our Aquatics Division is going to be offering a dive-in movie event, which you will be able to get together and continue to practice and talk about water safety.
Hamilton.
All right, let's take a picture. Good job. I think I made sure I checked the word count. That's got two times the amount of the next two combined. Our next proclamation is Fair Housing Month. So if I could have Vicky Denny, Amy Bruno, Ray Burns, Misty Gustafson, and Ryan Balk come on up. Whereas April 2023 marks the 55th anniversary of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, known as the Fair Housing Act. And whereas the Act and the city's nondiscrimination ordinance provide equal housing opportunity for all, regardless of age, color, disability, ethnicity, familial status, gender identity, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, sexual orientation, or veteran status, as a fundamental right of our nation, state, and city. And whereas equal opportunity housing is a fundamental right of our nation, state, and city, when housing is denied, the quality of life is greatly diminished. And whereas the National Resource Department provides ongoing fair housing education and services to Chandler residents, landlords, and businesses to promote awareness of fair housing principles, practices, rights, and responsibilities. And whereas the City of Chandler recognizes and values the efforts of those who seek to reduce barriers to full and fair housing opportunities. And whereas April is designated nationally as Fair Housing Month. In witness of, I blah blah blah, set my steel to this and call this Fair Housing Month. Okay, I cheated at the end. Ryan, would you like to say some words?
I would love to. Thank you, Mayor. So thanks for recognizing Fair Housing Month. Fair Housing is a very important piece of our work here in the Neighborhood Resources Department. But I specifically wanted to take a moment today to recognize this fantastic group of people. Under Misty's leadership, this group of housing stability specialists, Amy, Ray, and Vicky, do amazing work every day to help vulnerable people find housing in our community and then stay living permanently in that housing. In the last year, they've housed over 150 people in our community that were not housed before that. And their compassion and willingness to go above and beyond to do that is absolutely second to none. And we are so lucky here at Team Chandler to have them with us. So, congratulations. So many lives have been changed because of the work you guys do every day. I couldn't be more proud of you.
Our last proclamation is Municipal Clerks Week. So if Dana and our city clerk, Tia, would come up, and any others, let's bring them all up. Whereas the City of Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Court is the oldest amongst public servants. And whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on the functions of local government and community. And whereas Professional Municipal Clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Now, therefore, I, Kevin Hartke, Mayor of the City of Chandler, do hereby proclaim April 30th through May 6th as Professional Municipal Clerks Week. All right, Dana, without looking at this, how many times is the word "professional" used?
Well, we wanted to make sure that you realize we were professional clerks. I just want to take this opportunity to thank you, Mayor and Council, and this great group of people. Municipal Clerks Week is a great opportunity to recognize the clerk team, the amount of work, the amount of work that you do day in and day out, and the level of service that you provide to the citizens of Chandler is unmatched. So I'm proud to be part of this team. I thank you for the work that you do every day. And as a group, we would like to thank the Mayor and the Council for the support and guidance that you give to us. We truly appreciate it.
All right, Ivan, you were center here. Everyone else needs to move over. Keep moving. No, no, no. Just, we just need to move. There, keep going, keep going. There we go. That concludes our presentations for tonight. All right, Council, we did have a number of things that were called in. And so we were to work our way through these. First one is item number nine, called in by Councilmember Ellis. You had a question for the zoning attorney of the Ponderosa dispensary, correct? So Lindsey Shuby, please come up. Councilmember Ellis, I suddenly realized I was looking over here for you and you're...
Yeah, I've moved.
Yeah.
It's been a little while since I have moved this way. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember Ellis. For your record, Lindsey Shuby with Gammet and Burnham, 40 North Central in Phoenix, Arizona.
Appreciate your presence this evening. My main thing I wanted to find out is, the last time you were here, we had a conversation, and it was very well presentation for us. But you, I did ask you a question, and you promised that you were going to stay within the limits, and we were not going to go back and try to change the rules all over again. And it's my understanding that we're still thinking about changing some stuff and, and things like that. So I wanted to find out, are you going back on your words to us, or what is this all about? I don't think this has anything to do with us, the way we vote this tonight, based on other discussion that we had. But it's just the fact that I wanted to go on record that we had a discussion. And based on what staff is explaining to me that you wanted to change again.
Mayor, Councilmember, thank you. Good question. Yes, as far as the conditional use permit, we do believe we're in compliance with all the findings and what we put in the ordinance. And so respectfully request approval of that. As far as any changes, when the ordinance change was proposed to you, there's two use permit sections that you guys have that are consistent language. One is the affirmative obligation to come back annually. And it's just the, absolutely every year, without question, you come back. That language was put in the use permit that we took forward, that we brought forward that you guys approved in February. We are in conformance with that. If you see stipulation seven requires we come back in a year, and we look forward to that. We look forward to showing you that we are in compliance with our conditional use permit, the same way we've done with dog kennels and other uses throughout the city. That's a great tool of the conditional use permit. There's other language in your zoning ordinance that has an additional four words that says "one year" or "at the discretion of council." As opposed to an affirmative obligation to come back, it allows ultimate discretion for council. So I wouldn't say it was a Scribner's error. A Scribner's error is a six versus a nine, or something like that. But I think the intent was to give council ultimate discretion of requiring that we come back every year, or giving us three, four, five years at the discretion of council. That's not at issue tonight. It's a change that we would like to see but are not going to pursue. I am going to hold to my word, Councilmember. But just, it's something, the intent was to have those four words in it. It's burdensome on staff, both legal and planning, to come back every year. But we're, we're not requesting that change tonight. So it has nothing to do with the item in front of you on Thursday, and we will not be coming back and asking for it.
Thank you so much. But it is my understanding that we're staying firm in that one year. And at council discretion was never discussed with me at the time. And so for me tonight to go ahead and say yes, or even vote on this one, we will have to stay on the word that you gave me the last time you were here and continually for the rest of the time that I believe that you will be coming before us for this. It will continually be a year. And City Manager, is that understand, or should I talk to the attorney concerning that? Thank you.
And Councilmember, if Council, future councils want to change that, we can. There's nothing that, that codifies that. It's just the will of council.
Okay.
That it currently is.
All right. Appreciate that.
Any other questions for Ms. Shuby?
Mayor, just one question.
Councilmember Harris.
Just wanted to know, so the way it works is that, so one year, like kind of what we did with Dogtopia, just for clarification, how Dogtopia came in, and we said, okay, there could be loud barking dogs. And then one year later, we, you know, we said, hey, you got to come back every year. And then one year later, we was like, okay, well, there has not been any issues from that. We're okay with moving forward. Is that basically what we're doing here?
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I tried, that's what I tried to say.
Okay, yes, sir. Okay, got it. All right. I just wanted to make sure. I just wanted to make sure that it doesn't necessarily lock. We could say, oh, next year, if there's no issues or complaints, and we can just say, okay. Got it. I'm ready. All right.
Mayor, I would like to have a clarification on that. Dogs and what we are dealing with right now is two different things. And so it is important that we, we clarify the fact that we said that they will be coming back every year for, before council. Yes, I understand there will be, there might be another group of council who decide to change that rule. But at this time, it remains that next year, we are not going to just say, everything is okay. Just go ahead and give you three years. It's not an automatic thing.
Next year, if this, if the council here next year decides that they want to change that, they can. But right now, Ms. Shuby will be back, and this is what is on the books unless the council decides to change that. Am I standing on good legal ground, City Attorney?
Mayor, you are.
Good. Try not to do anything close to practicing law. All right. Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you very much.
Next is item number 11, brought by, and Vice Mayor, I'm going to go, if people here are part of the bringing something forward, I'm going to give them opportunity to speak first. But I will always make sure that I call your name as well. Item number 11 by Councilmember Ellis and Vice Mayor Orlando briefing and questioned on the grant application for the purchase of a joint mobile command center. I believe you wanted a brief presentation and then questions. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Chief Twiggins.
Mayor, Councilmember, so item number 11 is a resolution that authorizes the city to apply for a grant that would purchase a joint police and fire command vehicle. This vehicle was actually approved in the bond election in 2021. And what a mobile command vehicle is, is essentially, it's a scaled-down version of our EOC that's mobilized, and it's a vehicle that we actually take to the scene. These vehicles allow command staffs, these are command officers from the Police and Fire Department, to go to these incidents and perform all of their command and control functions. These are reserved for our largest incidents, our most complex incidents. I think a really good example of this, and really the catalyst that Chief Doug and I had for putting this in the bond committee, was we had a house fire. We had an individual shoot at some officers, barricade himself inside the house. So you had a very large police response there. And then at one point, he lit the house on fire while he was still inside. So you have a police incident, and you have a fire incident. Chief Doug and I arrived on scene, and you had a command post across the street for the police department, and a command post on the other side for the fire department, both trying to achieve the same outcome, but we have different missions. And so it was at that point that we realized, not only did we need to start training together at the command level, which we've done multiple times over the years, but we need to have the right infrastructure in place. And so this unit allows us to do that. It's equipped with six independent communication consoles. It has an elevated camera system. It has a weathered station, a tethered drone to it. So it really is a state-of-the-art piece of equipment. Right now, the City of Phoenix has one, and the City of Mesa has one. We will call for those when we need them. The problem is, is many of these incidents will last anywhere from six to, six hours to two weeks, like our battery fire. So it's difficult to keep them on scene. This, this unit would allow us to not only join forces as far as the command teams go, but we could keep it on scene for much longer. The total cost of this vehicle is $1.25 million. The grant itself will cover $680,000, and the city will contribute the other $570,000. And if we are awarded the grant, it's probably about an 18- to 24-month build time before we get it. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor. I love when you answer my questions before I even ask them.
That's the goal.
Yeah, that's the goal. So I really appreciate it. So all I can say right now is thank you for having been this forth, showing us the, the fact that we can work together, and collaboration is going to elevate the quality of life of those that live here in Chandler. So I really appreciate your forward thinking unto this and making sure that we go forward and push this initiative for you to get it. The part that I love the most is also that we're going to get the grant. So it's not all the people of Chandler that are paying for this. And so we are really appreciative of you finding a way to make it happen without it also costing us the most, but still costs us some, because we have to be part of it. But at the same time, move forward with the project. The 18 months that you mentioned, is that from purchasing and getting all your things in it and then have it on the road, or only the time just to get it within that limit of time?
Okay. Councilmember, two things. First, I want to give credit to Ryan Peters' office because he actually found the grant for us. So thank you, Ryan, and your team.
Thank you.
So from the 18 to 24 months is from the time that we spec it out. Abindale just purchased one of these vehicles, so we have a good spec. So from the time that they actually start the build, the build in itself is complicated, but the infrastructure of all the IT stuff within it takes a little bit longer. So it's going to be a good 18, almost two years before we see it.
You mentioned IT. Will our IT department be involved in that, or is that outside, our resources coming in?
That would be outside. So that would be the regional dispatch centers putting in the CAD systems and the MCTs and all the communication platforms.
Thank you, Chief. Really appreciate you.
Vice Mayor, any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, the Chief and Councilmember Ellis answer a lot of my questions. But Chief, the only, I guess the only question I have, maybe it's more towards the City Manager, is, and I think, I know we have a high probability of getting this grant, which is what we're told, but this is such an important item. Do we have a backup plan to ensure that we stay on this timeline? Is there enough, is there enough money in our budget for us to potentially do this this year? Keep the timeline moving?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Orlando, great question about timing of the funding. So this was actually advanced in the city's capital improvement program to take advantage of the likelihood of the grant. So as some of you know, there is some, what we call congressionally-directed spending from Congressman Stanton's office that goes behind this grant. So the likelihood of obtaining it is very high. That was part of the reason we're able to capture that by reorienting the CIP. If for some reason there's an issue with that, we'll revisit this with you. But we would look to rearrange the CIP again to make sure we're taking advantage of all funding opportunities.
Oh, great. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it's interesting, you know, these grants, like we, like, the community doesn't have to pay for it. The whole country has to pay for it. So it's good to have, and I'm glad. That story that you told about the house fire and then the shooting, all happening at the same time, is a great example of why we, we need something like this. Quick question, though, because it is grant-funded, what tether do we have the federal government as it relates to use? Or is there anything we have to give back? Or do they have access to it whenever they want? Or how does that work?
Mayor, Councilmember, I have not seen any tethers other than the match that we have to do. And so they are actually, we are going to purchase the vehicle, and they are going to purchase all of the communication equipment. But that was the only, only thing that I've seen so far within the grant. So there's no, it's not for federal use or any other jurisdiction. It's a Chandler resource that we utilize here within the city.
Thank you, Chief.
Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you. It's so, I'm so glad that you mentioned that it's coming out of Congressman Stanton's office. And so I wanted to give a big shout out to him and thank him. Because when we do go to Washington and we talk to these guys, and we, we always bring Chandler's needs before them. So I'm glad that people are listening, and they are helping us down here in Chandler. So I appreciate. Ryan, thank you so much also for just keeping, taking our voice down to legislature and let them know what we need, and that they will listen and help us out. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council, any additional questions? All right. Thank you, Chief. Next item called in was item number 16 by Councilmember Ellis. You just wanted to make a comment.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Councilmember Ellis, my name is Eric Barkum. I'm with Dignity Health here in the East Valley, specifically with the Dignity Health Foundation, East Valley. It's a pleasure to be here.
Hang on one second, Eric. Did you, did you want to just make a comment, or did you want a briefing? What did you want?
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, sir. Sure. So I'm here tonight to speak to you about a grant application that you all likely have in front of you. That application is being submitted by our foundation, the Dignity Health Foundation, East Valley. And we are submitting it to the Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation. The grant itself is a $25,000 request. And what the grant will do, if funded, will allow for us to purchase $25,000 worth of a piece of equipment that they call Point of Care Ultrasound, or POCS for short. Now, Dignity Health, East Valley, specifically Chandler Regional and Mercy Gilbert Medical Centers, this July are embarking in what they call Graduate Medical Education, GME. Others may know GME as physician training, academic medicine. It's, it goes by a number of terms. But basically, the program itself will, ultimately, as of 2028, we will, Dignity Health will be graduating 124 physicians who will be prepared to practice medicine, hopefully here in the valley or in Arizona. There's a statistic that over 50% of residents maintain in the market where they receive their resident training. And as many are aware, across the country, and certainly here in the East Valley, we're experiencing a physician shortage. And Dignity is hoping to be a part of the solution for that. So this POCS device, $25,000, should purchase about five of these devices, and specifically within our family medicine residency program. Our intention is for our residents to train on this piece of technology during their three-year term. Ideally, if, if we are, if we are able to secure funding that would allow us to do this, we'd actually like for our residents to maintain possession of their POCS device when they graduate and go into the community. Many practices where they will likely set up and provide care don't have this technology. So that would be a great benefit to the community. I'm trying to think of anything else to share before I welcome you to ask questions, but there's a lot to it. So I'll pause there and open it up for any questions. Councilmember?
Appreciate you, Mayor. Appreciate you giving us the background and the reason why we need to have this. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you giving us the background and the reason why we need to have this device in the hands of those who are in medicine right now and continuing their education. And the fact that the idea that they might take that in the field with them, it's always showing us how the quality of life of those in Chandler are being looked in by dignity and want us to continually making sure that people get the best of care that they deserve when they come to there. My question was to, for you to explain to us, what does this device do? Yes, you talk about it. It's a scan. I, I get it because that's my feel and I understand the process and things. But those, the people in Chandler would love probably to know what is this, this is going to do? How this technology is going to really improve how the doctors give them their diagnosis at hand?
Mayor, Councilmember, thank you for that. That's a great question. And I'm by no means the subject matter expert clinically at Dignity Health. However, I'm gonna do my best to serve as proxy to our program manager. So many folks are familiar with ultrasound technology, maybe most commonly known or experienced in a maternity scenario. Ultrasound devices like, like that, that you would normally picture are, they're certainly not mobile and they're very expensive, usually upwards of $30,000. So point of care ultrasound technology and specifically the, the piece of equipment from GE that we hope to purchase, gosh, it's about the size of an iPhone and it actually connects to an iPhone or a smart device that a physician would actually be holding in his or her hand. So the goal of POCUS technology specifically in a family medicine setting would be for that physician to have the ability to, to do some preliminary imaging real time in a setting that the patient, him or herself could actually bear witness to on, on the screen. So it's really about early diagnostics. It's about saving time. It's about avoiding unnecessary referrals or escalations in care. These are a few of the things I'm familiar with that the, that the technology will, will provide in terms of kind of an advancement in the quality of care.
That's amazing. When you mention about referrals, because that's, and then time that it takes for a doc, a primary care doctor to refer a patient to the specialist. By the time they get that test, so many different things can happen. I, I've seen that in cervical cancer. This is something that can also detect those things for women and, and men also in breast, breast cancer and all those kinds of things. So really appreciate that you're pursuing that dignity is looking into forward things to bring it. We are a city of innovation and so this is also part of what we can do here in Chandler. Appreciate it.
Mayor, Councilmember, thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments from Council? Councilmember Harris?
Just one question. This is a pass through grant through the city of Chandler. Just one question. How, how, by us signing our name along to this, how does this service like the people of Chandler? Because that's what we'll be doing. And then my second question would be followed by how would like approving this grant and then allowing the doctors or the people you're training to take it outside of our community and wish we're saying yes to it because we want it for our community? How does that, how does that work? I guess that's what I'm understanding.
Yes, Councilmember. So to address your, your first question just about providing that service to residents in Chandler, Chandler Regional Medical Center will be the purchasing entity for these devices. So certainly it, it, it's understandable that the devices may move back and forth between the city of Chandler and the town of Gilbert as the residents themselves rotate and, and travel to different places and provide care. But the equipment itself will belong to Chandler Regional Medical Center. It's only if now every year for the first three years, our family medicine residency program will take on six new residents. So six the first year, 12 the next year, 18 the third year. And so it really remains to be seen as to whether or not we might even have the capacity to consider the devices themselves staying in the possession of the residents. And there might be other considerations there that we might need to, to be aware of and, and take into consideration. So I would, I would temper that statement. It, it, it's a wonderful intention of ours and we certainly hope that we can make that a reality. And Councilmember, may I ask you for a refresher on your second question?
No, my, my second question have to do with, you know, the device leaving the community because of the fact that if we say we're gonna give you a grant signed on by Chandler, I think my constituents are asking me a question like, hey, you're giving out grants, but now the money is leaving out of our community. The purpose of it is to stay in the community, help our community because we do have people here that do have needs, you know?
Yes, Councilmember, thank you for that. And that's a difficult question to, to answer really succinctly because one of the main reasons why we were embarking on this initiative and, and standing up a GME program is specifically to increase the, the availability of not only family medicine doctors, but five different specialties of doctors here in the East Valley. And, and the statistic I mentioned earlier, we know that we put ourselves in a great position to do that by standing up the program. We certainly don't have any way of, of ensuring that the residents themselves don't leave our market to provide care. Although we believe that we're in a better position by training them here as opposed to the current model, which includes trying to recruit them from elsewhere. The issue of the devices themselves leaving our community is certainly something that we could come back to council and discuss at a later time if, if it looks like that might be something we'd like to consider formally. We'd be happy to come back and present that to you. And that's something that we'd be reporting to our partners at Fort McDowell Yavapai Nation as well.
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to make sure that if we approve this, that, that the devices are able to be, to stay in Chandler because we're approving it for devices to help care in Chandler and because we're signing off on it, it's a, it's a Chandler thing. So I just kinda wanted to make sure that we're, I, I like the program. I do like what you're doing. I do wanna see more trained. Obviously, we know that we cannot keep people here, but it's great to, to know that we're training at that level. I'm just more so concerned about the devices because the devices has specifically do with Chandler. And I wanna make sure whatever technology that we are able to grant, that, that technology stays. So that will be my only stipulation is to make sure that the devices doesn't leave the city of Chandler and that we're using it for our nurses and our doctors here to help our residents here. That's my only, so that's my only stipulation. But if you can meet that, if you can help meet that, I feel okay with, with what this item is.
Mayor and Councilmember, thank you for that. And that's certainly something that, that we can satisfy.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
City Manager, if you could maybe just send us a briefing of the nature of these pass through grants and our, what we control and what we don't. It's, it's really a literally just a pass through and we don't have a say on that. We just are the agent for that. So if you could maybe give a briefing, just send us a, a note on that, just to let everyone on the same page with us. It'd be helpful. Any other questions? Councilmember?
Just wanted to bring it all into perspective as far as why the hospital might be thinking about letting the resident move around with the device. It's just like having a temporal temperature taking device that you just keep on your person and then you move around. So if you're doing rotation and you're in a different place they sent you, so you take that device with you, but the device still belong to dignity and you might also be able to return it. Now, I didn't hear you say that it was gonna be granted to that intern to take it upon themselves now because the device still have to be taken care of. It still have to be connected to different things to get the results of the test. So them taking it on personally as their own device now, they will have to be responsible for doing all the work on it and everything. And I don't know if any resident will be willing to do that rather to do, to be able to take it at this point. If there was not any, you know, grant attached to it for them to pay for it, to be able to take it.
Mayor and Councilmember, yeah, that's a great point. And again, we're not, we're not exactly certain of what the considerations might be at, at this, this time. It'll be three years from, from this July before that opportunity would even present itself. And so that's something that we would need to explore. We also do know that the, the Dignity Health owned clinic where our family medicine residents will train and also provide patient care during their residency, we will need to have some of these POCUS devices on site permanently at those clinics for the purpose of the, the preceptors and faculty members to use to train on as well. So a few different things for us to consider there.
Somehow they're going to leave Chandler, however you look at it. But they might be able to come back, but you know, otherwise they will stay on site. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations on the, on the grant too, being accepted by the, by our neighbors.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next item called in by everybody other than in, seen us and hear us is item number 17 related to the pay down of the pension funding. We could have a, that'd be you, Don. You could give us a briefing and I'll start with some questions and comments.
Okay, Mayor and Council, item number 17 represents some changes to pension funding and reserve policy, financial policies. So the city of Chandler has nine financial policies, all approved by city council through the years that exemplify high standards of stewardship over our Chandler financial resources. They are also guides for sound financial planning and budgeting while maintaining fiscal integrity. So the first, I'll just kinda walk through each one. The first one is a change to the reserve policy. The reserve policy lays out, assesses risk and then it, it determines a certain level of, of reserve that would be needed. And in this case, the reserve defines the minimum balance that the general fund should hold on an annual basis. The language in the financial policy currently states that it is four months of operating revenues. It's a calculation of the four months of operating revenues, but it, it simply states operating revenues, which means it is subject to ongoing and one-time operating revenues. The intent of this policy is to ensure we have four months of operating revenues to sustain our operations. So the recommendation made to Mayor and Council at the Second Budget Workshop was simply to add the word ongoing to that. So it would calculate four months of our ongoing operating revenues as that measure or that balance. So that is simply the change. It really is, it just adds clarification to the policy, if you will. It still is well over the Government Finance Officers Association recommended level, which is a two-month operating level and we are at four. So with this change, it is very, very minor. It, it does add that clarification. And after consultation as well with our financial advisor, there is no risk at all to our AAA bond rating for this change. And then second, we have the PSPRS or the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System. It's a long acronym there, policy. And Arizona revised statute requires that that be updated annually. When we receive the actuarial report from PSPRS, it is a requirement that Mayor and Council approve the assets and the liabilities that are stated in our report. It really just makes it known to everyone where we're at. We're currently at a level of, excuse me, of 70.3% funded. With the change as of June 30th, 2022, it currently brings us up to 75.2% funded. For the current year, fiscal year 2223, there was an additional $50 million payment that Mayor and Council authorized. That is not included as part of this financial policy update since it's updated based on the actuarial report. And it also states within the policy, the payment that is projected for fiscal year 202324, which at this time, based on conversations again at our Second Budget Workshop on May 20th, there was a desire to look at paying off finally the PSPRS unfunded liability to secure the retirement of all of our public safety personnel. And in doing so, that payment, we believe is 73 million and that is stated in the policy as well. But both of these recommended changes to these financial policies would then help guide staff in preparing, of course, the proposed fiscal 202324 budget. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. I comment then a couple of questions is I'm, I'm very excited about us moving in this direction. When we first started this process, what was it, about 2015, I'm thinking, 2014? When we were aware of this, I, we embarked on a longer term plan and I, I, we were just committed to paying this down and because of things outside of our control, as we would make a significant payment. And low and behold, the amount to pay down would be higher the next year. And that was very discouraging for me and council at that time. But I'm, I'm pleased we're here. I honestly didn't expect that we'd be able to pay this down when I'm, while I was mayor. I'm super pleased about that. It's been something I've been very passionate about. And so thank you, council, present staff and former councils that really committed to keeping our eye on the price here. So I have two questions for you. Because we are paying this down now and, and you could just be approximate. I don't need to, need to know exactly, but how much money will we be saving in the next ensuing years? As well as, second part, this just pays off the unfunded liability. We still have a payment every year. So how much will we be saving and what is our ongoing, as projected today, payment?
Thank you, Mayor. So the, we currently pay a little over, well, almost about $20 million annually in our employer contribution on behalf of our firefighters and our police officers. With the, so that payment that we pay annually is made up of both the regular contribution that goes towards active members, future retirements, as well as kind of a back payment, if you will, of this unfunded liability. So the impact of actually paying off the unfunded liability, we anticipate that employer contribution coming down to the tune of about $10 million annually, but it'll take us about four years to get there. So it is an investment in lowering future expenditures, which is great because that helps us maintain as costs are going up and we look for opportunities to bring those ongoing costs down. It helps us really kind of maintain tax rates versus having to increase. So there's a lot of benefits to this. So I'm, I'm just very grateful that Mayor and Council committed to this over time and that we're actually almost there, so.
Very good. Let me start with Councilmember Poston and we'll work our way across with those who have weighed in and Councilman, Vice Mayor Orlando, then anybody else. Councilmember Poston?
Thank you, Mayor. My comments were really more on the reserve policy and that you and I had had this conversation several times, so thank you for that. I did wanna commend you and your team for coming up with the solution. I really think that this policy will put dollars back to work for our residents in Chandler and instead of us keeping it, it's working for them. But it was important that we adhere to the fiscal responsibility and the fiscally conservative policies that we've had. So I don't know if you wanna add to that, but again, thank you because that AAA bond rating is incredibly important to us. And the one item that you and I did discuss this morning was about if we found that maybe the due diligence that you've done to this point, which I know you've done a great deal of due diligence. If you found anything to change, we could adjust accordingly, right?
Yes, through the Mayor Councilmember Poston, absolutely. The financial policies are set by Mayor and Council, so any changes we need to make in the future would be brought forth for your approval.
Okay. Thank you, Donna. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is, reminds me of when I was a kid, you're like, you know your Christmas presents are waiting underneath the tree, but you kinda, you're just standing at your door, ready to come out and look at them. I know it, I know that moment's gonna come where we get to see this paid off, but I wanna thank you and, and your staff. But moreover, councils before we sat here and, and Mayor Hartke for staying focused on what our core competencies are. That way we didn't spend money on things that were frivolous. We spent money on, on what our community expects, which are great roads, good public safety, great parks and the core competencies that we're responsible for. What that has done is given us a financially responsible position to be able to pay this off quick. And also economic development that's being done in our community by Michael Miranda and his team, as well as working with the Chamber, East Valley Partnership, all the other groups. GPAC has really created a, an incredible community that is creating jobs and increasing incomes and all the things that go along with increasing tax revenue. So it's good news. So it's good news. We're going to free up a lot of ongoing dollars, so hopefully we can find either places to spend that in our parks and public safety or we can find ways to, to cut taxes for our residents. So I appreciate it, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you so much, Mayor. It is such an amazing feeling. I had lunch with Plaza today and. When I was sitting there and had an opportunity to tell him that we were going to pay this thing off and you could see the smile and the fact that they believe that we, we really care. And after they put all those years here, they will not be left hanging without having their retirement to be able to take care of their families. So thank you again, Mayor, and everybody else who have worked so hard to keep us on task and keep pushing forward with this paying off this money. That's a lot of money to pay. That, that's a, that balloon payment is absolutely a large one. But we, we think that it's worth it and we put all our weight behind it. And I really want to keep looking at each one of the 500 members of those department that works for us and to let them know that we are going to continue to work hard for them and continue to let them know that we care by doing things like this every single day. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, any comments or questions?
No, thank you, Vice. Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. Don, great job as usual. You know, I think a couple of things I want to just share, and we, we probably all of us know this on the dais and staff, but to our, to our folks out in the audience. First of all, this, this tactic we took, strategy, I guess, with the tactics involved, many other cities haven't done this. They are actively bonding and doing other things that's going to create more of an economic hardship for their individuals. It's going to be higher payback, higher premiums. It's sort of like doing a mortgage and having to pay a 7% today versus buying this down in, in the future. So I, kudos again to this, this philosophy we use to, to use the one-time dollars. And it goes back to what Dawn said earlier. You know, we have a great budget process and as, as Ms. Lang indicated, we have nine core directives. But those directives are flexible enough to allow us to adjust year by year the market and economic conditions. And, and this is what we're doing tonight. We are adjusting our core policies to adjusted economic and modeling condition. And all of this, in, in the long term, short and long term, will save the taxpayer dollars. And I think that's the bottom line here, as well as freeing up, you know, dollars for our police and fire and the other things we mentioned by other council members. So we are able to save this money. We're able to utilize this money because of the great policy we put in place years ago and we're still abiding by those. So kudos.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Harris.
Yes, Mayor, again, this, again, I just kind of wanted to reaffirm that this, paying this off reaffirms our commitment to our public safety department that when you're done working with the city of Chandler, you have, you, you have your pension, you have your dollars ready for you as you retire. This council has continued to put forth great fiscal policies. We continue to make great decisions to make sure that we're putting the people first. We know public safety carries a, a load in this community and keeping us safe. And I'd rather like knowing that the police is going to show up because they know they're secured and their family's secured. So again, kudos to, to Mayor for making this a part of your vision. Kudos to council for also making this a part of your commitment. Kudos to staff for making this your priority. And again, this makes our city better. So Josh, this is the second time you've done this for a city paying off, paying down the PRPS and you're doing a great job as a city manager. We really do appreciate you and we appreciate you, Don, for that commitment as well and working together to make sure we stay on top of things. So again, staff, mayor, council, again, thank you. This is a team effort and you guys are really, I really feel that you're, we're making the city of Chandler proud and our residents. Thanks, Mayor.
Angel, you want to finish this out or you're good?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thank you to everybody who's a part of this, Don, especially your team as well. I just look forward to more future investments like this within our public safety and the men and women who are protecting us daily. That's it.
Josh, you did answer my question on the change on that other one, so no other things have been called in. Council, that concludes our study session for tonight. We'll see you all on Thursday.